No, I'm saying that I'm just trying to...
On Saturday, they can't say she asked.
Is there a...
I don't know that you just...
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Right, right.
Because then maybe she would say, "Look, I just want to get rid of that."
Because I'm just wondering, I mean, you can't just throw a thousand dollars. I would assume that there would be some state...
Well, you'd have to do it consistently.
Regulated.
You'd have to do it with everybody.
One question quick, Tony said that this lady is from Woodstock on the special...
No.
Possession?
She's down here.
Do you want him to make Martian change that?
Can you get a chair in here?
In the special room?
No, it's in...
Talking about that blue house?
In... We talked like this for five or six thirty. In those minutes.
Oh.
He's hoping to find some more money.
Well, we could just to make sure it's correct, so we don't have to look back at it.
I know, that's a good question.
So have him say it?
Yeah. If it's wrong, it should be fixed, I think.
Okay.
If we have somebody that wants to raise a house, can you check to see before our next EDA meeting if there's anything that the EDA can do to help with like a low interest loan or whatever? We have a property owner that wants to...
But she wants you to officially ask to have it changed.
You know what I mean, but they can't afford it. Okay. If they can pay it over.
I was afraid you'd say that. I just know I'm a person.
Say five words.
Yeah, okay.
Could you just check into that and see?
That's why I made my note.
Because I don't know, Tony just asked me, I don't know.
I'm going some direction, I don't know which way to go.
But that would be another avenue that if we could help with that with low interest...
Right, to put them in the right direction, low interest. You know, he doesn't want a free ride.
Sure.
But he wants it done like anything else.
Just can't pay it right up front.
Yeah.
Yeah, so just think... Put some blood to it, maybe we'll talk about it at the next one's meeting.
Oh, okay. So just we'll see what he comes up with. You let it go.
You had meetings. Are you educated?
Say, where's your words, say Woodstock.
Seven thirty at the high school.
Woodstock.
Well, I know.
Seven thirty. Before we get started... I got half a day in, buddy. I think we need to have a liquor store committee meeting.
Yes.
Since we got that report. I know what you're doing.
I'll tell you why I haven't got the data to give yet. Because Kim doesn't know how to give her investment statements yet. And every time I try and or I do it, we get interrupted. So we promised we were going to get it done today. We promised we're going to do it tomorrow right after our discussion with the recap of the council. That we'll do it and then I'll be able to provide the data.
Okay.
When are you thinking, the end of this week? Because I can, once she gets that investment statement done, then we can go back again.
Next Monday.
Next Monday?
Or no, the 24th, because we have the...
Should it be next week?
No, that's the one where I'm going to be writing in on fumes. Because I'm in Buffalo. I mean, if it could be next Monday, that'd be easier, but I mean, people have all for Easter.
Should be...
No, we don't.
The kids, school, the kids do for school.
I don't.
That doesn't matter. Do you want Monday?
We don't.
Okay, let's do it Monday to 17.
Okay.
I gotta go cell phone. I figured. Who's gonna do it?
I have a drill at seven if you want me there, but...
What, you do it what, six or...
I don't know that you need me there.
No, we just need to go over.
Would you come here a minute? Do you know if your availability on Monday, April 17th is for a liquor committee meeting?
Yes.
Is that going to be all right?
Yeah.
And I'm going to be off the whole day, so if you guys want to turn the day...
Are you back in town by six?
Yeah.
Six. Six on Monday.
He's gonna be there.
He's the liquor guru.
I can tell you what shake.
He's the Captain Morgan of this town.
Guru. No, that's not my product, so I'm the Jack Daniels. Good name. Bad at spelling.
Should we...
Sell that to him.
Let Allison and her group go first? Yeah, we'll do that. Before we go through all the other stuff? Yeah. Call to order. Well, they're pretty close to the top anyway. You have one more minute to see the pastor, Tom. Because I don't think people want me to do the invocation.
You probably could.
I could. I feel fired up, I might do that.
There's just some basics to that that I think you've got to do, yeah.
I'm just...
I'm sure somebody could come up with it.
Yeah. Chris, is this the latest that came from...
That's number four.
Number four? Yeah. I think it was last week.
Yeah, it was the other day.
When did it go on this week?
Oh, they're starting again on...
No, I don't know. But nothing else out of date. I'm sorry, I don't know. That clock, time stands still, remember?
Well, not now, it's not.
Does anybody have their Verizon phone?
Yeah, sixteen.
Oh, wait a minute.
This one says six thirty two.
Good for your phones.
My mom like puts a book as taking over...
Okay, we'll call to award the regular meeting of the Tracy City Council for Monday, April 10th, 2017. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
By Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please have a seat. Pastor's on here. We got approval of the minutes from our meeting on March 27th. Anybody have any questions or comments about the regular meeting or the work session that we had?
Got a correction for the work session on page three. The location for the Behavior Care Specialist, a lot of Sioux Falls, not Woodstock.
Any other additions or deletions to either the agendas or the minutes, I'm sorry?
Motion to approve of that correction.
Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Next is a number five, approve of the agenda. Do we have any additions or deletions to our agenda?
We do. Under nine G, Chris Larson is here from ISG for a proposal to approve request for geotechnical construction testing in phase one. Under nine H, the Terris here from the Economic Development Authority to ask for the council to set a public hearing for the proposed property tax abatement for the Masonic Building Bond. Under nine I, Terris also here to, for the hospice house petition for local improvements and agreement of assessments and the waiver of irregularity and appeal. Under consent calendar, under 12, we have added 12C, approval of the Fire Relief Association minutes from March 6, 2017, and the approval of the Aquatic Center Committee minutes from January 10th of 2017. And finally, under new business, the planning commission has recommended putting a sidewalk and a grass in between the original bakery and the old Anderson building as budget allowance.
Okay, does anybody else have anything else to add to the agenda?
Move them through those amendments.
Second, motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Next, a public comment period. Anybody here from the public want to comment on something that's not on the agenda?
Sorry, you don't need to.
Anything? All right. Let's go, no public hearing, no reports. We've got petitions, requests, and communications, and we have Allison here from Behavioral Care Specialist, and she's going to give us a presentation. Thank you for coming, Allison.
Thank you, Allison.
Thank you. Where do you want me? Here?
Control's here.
Okay. And I actually brought along Dr. Tracy Stevens. She's our clinical psychologist from Behavior Care Specialist. And Mike Holshoff, our Greco special operations, more so because the roads were coming and we need somebody to hook us up technology wise, so he doesn't have to talk, but she will. She'll jump in about halfway through. So, my name is Allison Holshoff. I am the CEO of Behavior Care Specialist. We've been in business going on 11 years. It'll be, October will be 11 years. And we provide services to kids with autism and severe behavior disorders. We started in Sioux Falls. We had one client. A little background about myself, I started doing in-home ABA therapy when I was 18. I provided therapies to kids that were ages three to six with autism. Dr. Tracy Stevens was my mentor and a trainer out of the state of South Dakota that oversaw our programming. So we've worked together for about 16 years, or 18 years, it's been a long time. And then I went on to grad school and I worked with Dr. Stevens at the state of South Dakota as an autism specialist. And there, we worked on a clinic team where we diagnosed, we did consulting. And 2006, I left the state and started this company, and Dr. Stevens joined me shortly after leaving the state and coming along with us here at Behavior Care Specialist. And so, I just gave you a little background, we were established in 2006, and we're in four states now. We're in South Dakota, Minnesota, Wyoming, and Iowa. We just branched into Minnesota, probably, I suppose, eight months ago. We've actually consulted in Minnesota in like the Worthing area and, what was it, Clayton, Minnesota. And so we've kind of crossed the border for a while, but we hadn't set up an office. And as this, earlier this year and last year, we got into Wyoming and then we moved into Iowa, Minnesota, the opportunity came. I don't know if you're familiar with Perum, Minnesota?
Mm-hmm.
And they're a smaller community. And a little bit about Behavior Care Specialist, if you're familiar with Sioux Falls, there are lots of opportunities to get services for your child on the autism spectrum in Sioux Falls. And so we were there, and there was lots of great competition and lots of places people could go. I originally went to school and did my undergrad in Aberdeen, South Dakota, which is not as big as Sioux Falls. And what was happening is, I was consulting in the district time and time again for kids who had gone to Sioux Falls, had gotten some really good services and came back, and then would fall apart, and then they would call us in to consult. And what we realized is there was a pretty big gap in services once you left an agency and then went back to your home district. And so we decided probably about six years ago to open our school in Aberdeen and try to fix that. Our goal was to get out into rural communities that weren't super close to Sioux Falls and serve them. And we always joke that we tried to get into communities that had a McDonald's or a Walmart because we knew we could survive there, especially that Walmart anywhere close. So we ended up in Perum because they're really close to Detroit Lakes, which has Walmart. And then we were able to serve all those little rural communities around there. So instead of driving four hours, we were driving 45 minutes or 25 minutes. We are now in Sioux Falls, Brookings, Aberdeen, Mitchell, Sisseton, South Dakota, Rapid City, Perum, Casper, and Rock Valley. So if you look at that, the only one that's a really big city is Sioux Falls. Rapid's pretty big. But even in our Rapid office, it took us a really long time to move out there because they're, one, they're really spread out, but there is a base out there. And so for our early intervention model, we were able to grow pretty rapidly out there because there's a insurance company called Tricare. Currently, we're, we have over 150 employees and we're serving over 100 clients in about 20 school districts. Our intensive early intervention model typically, kids are ages 18 months to about six years of age. They usually are coming into our clinic or we're going into their home. All of our programs are overseen by a board certified behavior analyst. We have a social skills program, so some kids might only come once a week, and they work on, if you're familiar with like a Michelle Garcia winner curriculum or a Jed Baker curriculum, and they come and they come with other kiddos who have behavior difficulties or autism, and they work on developing language and social skills. Usually that's in supplement to a school program. Sometimes we work in conjunction with kids who go to school all day long and then just come for active school services anywhere between one and five times a week for a few hours after school. We have our school day program, so at each of our sites, except Minnesota currently, just because we're really new up there, and our early intervention program grew so quickly, we hadn't, we didn't come in to assist the school. Most of the times when we come into a community, there's a need in the school district as well. So we're duly funded. We're funded through private healthcare insurance. Most states right now have a mandate to pay for autism coverage and ABA services. We have a really great little billing department that can help kind of walk through that process. The other 50% of our funding comes from school programs. So instead of a school putting a kiddo on a bus, I use Brookings all the time because they're a couple of years old, but they came to us and said, "Hey, we're bussing kids to Sioux Falls all the time." So these kids are getting on the bus for an hour and 15 in the morning because they have to pick up multiple kids, and an hour plus on the way home. It's really tough on our kids. When's BCS going to open here? And so we already had some intervention, early intervention clients, and then the school district approached us and it was a no brainer. We always kind of joke and say, "Once we have about five kids on our roster, we'll open an office anywhere." We're in Sisseton, South Dakota, which is where I'm from, which is really tiny, so we'll go anywhere if the need is there. Our school day program runs six and a half hours a day. It's 32.5 hours a week, and we adjust that for the client's needs. So some kids start at eight and some start at 9:30, and their day is just six and a half hours. And because we are trying to meet the needs of their IEP and the needs of the student, we've done things where we start with a student in their home, assist them getting up and training the parents, and helping them get that transition master so they can independently go to school, or so the parents can do it successfully. But we really work on whatever the client needs. We do have a small residential program in our Mitchell location and our Aberdeen location. Typically, those are for some of our really intensive clients that we know that the district needs some help getting things under control pretty quickly. Maybe there's a waitlist in getting somewhere else in the state that takes a different type of funding. Excuse me. But that's not really, you know, we've got four spots available in, we have four spots that we utilize in Mitchell, and we have four spots in Aberdeen, and we typically have an enrollment of two to three in Aberdeen and two to three in Mitchell. We're never really ever full. We don't push for it because our goal is to be in your community, be in your home, train your parents, train your school district, because ultimately, long term, that's where your kiddos are going to need the support. And then we have a consultation and training program, so lots of districts who don't maybe have a strong behavior team within their school will have us come out. We will train your paras. Some districts have us come out and set up full on behavior classrooms, so we'll train your staff over the summer. We'll physically bring in all the structures, so we'll bring our program into your district so that eventually you can maybe serve multiple kids, and then we just consult and help program within. And then we have a clinic and diagnostic service as well, that if you're looking for a new diagnosis, you're looking for just basic testing. So that's kind of a little bit of all that we can do. And I think I've told you a little bit about us. I'm going to let Dr. Stevens talk a little bit about what ABA is. Are you guys familiar with applied behavior analysis? Okay, I'll let you start.
All right, I'll make this quick. My name is Tracy, so I'm loving this town.
We're going to have an office here no matter what.
Yes, I drove in and my name is on everything. This is really cool. And it's spelled right and everything. I'm a licensed psychologist, have been specializing in autism and kids with severe aberrant behavior disorders for 24 years now. And so we're excited to be here, talk a little bit about ABA. ABA is, as Allison said, stands for Applied Behavior Analysis, and it is a field of study in psychology that breaks behavior down into the smallest parts and is very data based. And we can make huge changes in behavior in very short amount of time because we can study it and understand, you know, why the behavior occurs. Applied there stands for real world, socially relevant or important, meaning that it's not laboratory or experimental. We deal with real behaviors, it's occurring. The behaviors that we work with have to be observable and measurable, and the analysis part comes when we collect the data and we measure it and study. Yeah, it's one of the computer programs that we use when we set up and design the kids' programs. We actually put the kids' programs right into a computer system, and we collect data on every single behavior and every skill that we teach, and the parents can log in and watch every day the progress. The school teachers can log in and, you know, we can print out the reports and the progress of this for the insurance companies and show them that what we're doing is working. Some of these terms here are, you know, the basic principles of ABA, and if you're familiar with, you know, teaching in general, a lot of these things are terms you have heard about before. One of the main basic principles we use is reinforcement. We figure out what makes the, you know, the kid tick, what they will work their butts off in order to get access to. Nowadays, a lot of times that's going to be your electronics, one of our stronger tools. We do preference assessments. Discrete trials means the teaching strategies that we use, we break down every skill into, you know, the minute steps of the skill and we teach it, just like you build a house. We build the basement first and then we build the, you know, the foundation, and then we scaffold up the skills. And a lot of times when I start with a kid, we've got an assessment tool that assesses 500 different skills, and we can actually put into a graph and show you what the kid already knows. Because kids don't come, you know, with a blank slate. They know some things. We graph that out and show you exactly of those 500 skills, how many that kid has, and then I can go in there and write programs for all those missing skills that they don't have, and then we just teach those until we build that building. The uses of ABA are unlimited. A lot of people pair it with autism because right now, if you go in and research autism and therapies, ABA is the only effective research proven therapy for autism. The U.S. Surgeon General states that, the United States Research Health Associations and the American Academy of Pediatrics, all will tell you that ABA is the only research proven therapy for autism. But it also is used for a lot of different things. It can be used for behavior change and, you know, increasing worker productivity, stopping smoking, overeating, getting people to increase their rates of recycling, taking their, you know, diabetes medicine, you know, correctly. You can use ABA for everything. And so it's not just limited to autism. Some of the advantages of ABA is that we can train paralegal staff pretty easily and quickly. They can learn the techniques. Like I said, it's data driven. It maximizes teacher and student time. It's proven effective with very severe problem behaviors and behaviors that a lot of times will get kids kicked out of school or they're not able to be in normal environments in the community. We can actually change those behaviors, and we can do it in a variety of settings. To use ABA correctly, we have to make sure that the behaviors we choose are relevant and, you know, socially important and important to the family. We clearly identify the goals. We obtain permission at every step and every stage to make sure that what we're doing is agreed on by the caregivers and, you know, the other caregivers that are involved, including the teachers. We provide warm, caring environments and make sure to always maintain the dignity of the students. Most of the kids that we work with love BCS and don't want to leave at the end of the day because that's where all the fun stuff happens with us. Behavior, again, you know, it serves a communicative function. That's why we all use behavior. Kids use behavior to communicate. Research shows that we use behavior to gain, usually to gain something or to escape something. And we can figure out the behavior of the kids with autism, and if we know why they're doing the behavior, it's easy to fix it because we just switch that around and make them use communication usually instead of the behavior. And then when you select the interventions, we do that, so we make sure that the intervention matches that function because you can actually make the behavior worse if you don't do that. Because if you're, if they're doing the behavior in order to get something and you eventually give in and give them that thing, it just strengthens up behavior every time. It's almost like a lottery machine concept there. Even if only one person reinforces it out of 10, it's going to make the behavior stronger over time, and we can set up behavior programs to make sure that's not happening. And then, you know, what behavior do we target? Because a lot of times there are so many. We get kids in, especially our early intervention kids, they're not eating, they're not sleeping, they're not toilet trained, they have temper tantrums, they are having trouble learning language, they don't have play skills, they don't interact with their peers or their siblings. And usually what we do is we start with the most socially significant behaviors, and then we actually target them all over time. And a lot of times, an early intervention kid that comes to us, it will take us, you know, anywhere from 18 months to three years to get them completely caught up in those skills to the point where they're able to function. And we've started, you know, we started, our earliest one ever was 14 months that we started, and the oldest one we have right now will be 22 in July that we're serving. And that one came to us at 14 years, a lot of behavior problems. So it's never too late, but we would prefer that if we're going to get beat up, that it's by a three-year-old, not a 14-year-old. Three-year-olds are a lot easier to pick up and move around. So, and ABA can be used in the classroom, like Allison says. We've actually gone in and trained school districts and set up their programs. You know, we're not there every day. We come in, show you what to do, and then come back and, you know, watch and consult. That's one of our models. ABA can be used with typical students. And so will, again, because of that power of reinforcement, and that's one of our strongest and almost always the main tool that we use. All right, so, and using reinforcers in an ABA program, we deliver the reward immediately following the behavior. And when we start out with small kids, we will ask them just to, you know, come sit or follow one direction, and if they do it for us, we reward them. And then we go on to, you know, having them do more and more in order to get the reward. We change the degree of reinforcement according to their level of accomplishment. So if they do something we already know they know how to do, they get a little reinforcer. If they give us a response, that's even better than we've never seen before. We really lay on the reinforcement form and show them that that's exactly what we're wanting them to do. We always keep our tone very consistent with our message. We're consistent with all the behaviors. We've got a little kiddo that I worked with all day today, and her main goal is just to stay on her schedule. That's all she needs to do is stay on her schedule for the day. And she got off her schedule today by about two and a half hours. And we're like, all right, well, I look at some of my staff, you know, and they're like, "We have no plans tonight. We'll stay." So she finished her, her day out. We sent the bus away at three o'clock, and she finished her schedule out. Took her till probably about 5:30, and she got to go home. We'll start over tomorrow, it's a new day. But always being very consistent and following the rules that are set up. Pairing rewards with social praise, because really, what's the most important thing? I mean, we can hand out rewards all the time, but we want to become the rewards as the adults and as their teachers. We want to be the ones that they want to work for us and they enjoy being with us. We're not just the people that hand out other things that they like. So we work really hard at forming those relationships with the kids. And then we fade those other reinforcers out into something more natural in the environment.
So I don't know if you guys have any other questions that are either ABA related or maybe questions as far as services related, or we were invited here to just talk a little bit about our services. This is a little bit new to us. In our Minnesota office, this is what happened. We received a phone call. They knew what we did, they wanted it in their community, they invited us up, we did something really similar to this. And then a few months later, they called us back and then we opened shop. We basically, at that point, we found out there was some interest in the community. Those parents have reached out to us inside this file. There is a... Oh, there is not. There's a lot of information in here, but I'll leave my business card up here, too. There is on our website, there's a new client referral form that you can just click on on our website, and a parent would just fill that out and it gets sent into our office. And then we reach out to that parent and we help them walk through the funding. If it's a school district, we have them fill out a, that the parent still has to sign a consent form, so we're able to come in and see the child, and then we get you on our schedule, and we come out and we set up an observation and kind of figure out what the needs are. And then we move forward with it, so whether it's a consultation or whether it's a new client, sometimes when, because you guys are still quite a ways away from Sioux Falls. you guys are still quite a ways away from Sioux Falls, so I think Sioux Falls is our closest office here, right? Or is Brookings closer?
Brookings.
And Tracy's actually the clinical supervisor in Brookings. Um, and usually what happens is if there's interest in a, in a city, we, we look to hire locally, um, if we aren't already existing there. So like right now, we're looking at expanding into Cheyenne and we just happen to have an employee who's wanting to move to that area. Otherwise, we typically look to hire locally and then bring in our supervisors from our other locations. Sorry.
So would you be looking to set up a shop here? Would you need a property to go into?
Actually, and that's part of Mike's job is usually when we come to a new town, um, we send Mike out to kind of survey the land and figure out where we can set up shop and, um, all kidding aside, every time we've ever started somewhere, we've ended up on Main Street in some little building thinking we're only gonna have two clients and then nine months later, we're looking for a bigger space. So Mike doesn't like me to go in and buy or to rent the first thousand square foot I can find. He ends up having to move, like, I think we're at like 42 times he's moved us.
At least he's good at it.
Yeah. He's really not.
Oh, alright.
He gets grumpier every time we move.
Sorry dude.
So what would, what would you need for us to, to proceed forward?
Yeah, we would, um, the first thing we always do for is is there a need in your community? Do you have kids that have autism and are they needing services? Do you have a school district that's wanting some sort of, um, assistance? Are they having kiddos that they're having to, what we call send out of district? Um, and is there a need? And, and once that's established, we typically start getting that paperwork rolling, um, find, find out what the needs of those clients are, get them, um, if it's an insurance client, there is a, a pretty thick protocol of we have to get you through, we have to do an assessment and we have to get a treatment plan to your insurance company. So it's about five weeks. Um, part of Tracy's really important role in Minnesota is we, we can't function in this state without her supervision so that somebody, even our, even our BCBAs who are licensed in the state of Minnesota, still have to operate underneath her. And so, um, once we feel that there's a need there and we have enough clients to support it, we start looking for an office and are they in-home clients, are they school clients, are they going to be, um, it's kind of whatever the need is.
So what would our next step be? Would it be mayor, I guess I'm addressing the council to get with the school board and find out if there's, there's a need in both St. Mary's and the public school? Um, I, I believe there's a need, but I mean, I'm just one voice, but, and then if we do, did that, then how would we proceed and how quickly can we proceed to do that?
Um, I actually like to move really fast. So my main job in, originally I used to do therapy all design, my main goal in the company now is grow. Um, I, I manage things from like a CEO level, but really my main job anymore is to just grow. So that's part of, you know, answering those questions to the school board, checking out the community, meeting with those parents that are new into that community, you know, hiring those staff, finding that location and getting all that going. And it happens pretty quick. Um, I think start to finish, it was about six total weeks. Um, we went up the week before Christmas in perm and we were seeing clients by the third week of January. So, um, they had had something, you know, we had a meeting like this, they had put out a whole bunch of, of our packets, we had a bunch of referrals come in and we worked with those families and those parents to figure out, you know, so when we came, we were doing multiple assessments in a day and, you know, we kind of, I teamed it where Tracy would do an assessment and I would find an office space and we just, we rolled into town. And we really do look to people within the community to help kind of direct us. When we were in, if you're familiar with Rock Valley, Iowa or anything around it, um, Sioux Center, I think is the next, I literally walked up and down the streets of Main Street and every other building and I went into the barber and said, hey, I'm looking for a space to rent. Here's what we do for a living, here's my card, call me. So I was at the tire shop, I went to the barber. It is helpful when somebody in town knows us and can kind of direct us to them, like, here's a space, here's the rent, we would love you as neighbors.
And that won't be an issue. We'll, we'll find you space. I guess I'm asking what, what steps do we need to take to move this forward?
Typically too, um, when we open an office, you can draw like a compass or, you know, of about an hour.
Right, so I mean, it's not just our school district, it's a lot of schools.
When we opened in perm, we sent out like 22 newsletters. So we, we took, we literally took the compass anywhere around us, we just sent out newsletters saying, we're in town, we're doing an informational meeting and we just came. Because the town wanted us there, we were like, hey, if you, if you loan us this room, we'll come and talk all day about ABA and get your community excited about having us there. Uh, the next step would really be getting the information out to, is the referral form has to get filled out so we can find out from the parents.
That was gonna be my question, is getting as many referral forms as possible.
Yep.
Uh, school district to answer one also.
When we went to perm, that is one of the things that they invited us back to do is they, we did something very similar to this and then about two weeks later, they asked us to come back and meet with their superintendent and their building principals and that's all I did for a day, um, to just figure out if there was even a need for us. Um, some smaller communities have a co-op that they already use and those co-ops can meet the needs and then sometimes those co-ops only can do so much and so then we're an additional resource, so.
And then expertise in ABA isn't, isn't out there.
Right.
Yeah. So yeah, most of the kids that we have encountered in Minnesota typically have insurance plans that cover this. It's considered medically necessary that they're doing this.
And you guys are kind of a, you are in a really great state. So when we started 11, almost 11 years ago, Minnesota was the only state that we were working with. So we were in South Dakota, but the only insurance company that was covering for us at that point was Minnesota. And then we had commercial insurances that were out of California. And so, um, opening shop in Minnesota is a little bit different, the regulations, once we decided to, to put a shingle in Minnesota, we had some other regulations to follow, but so far it's been pretty simplistic. We're working on, um, getting Medicaid approved because that opens up a huge door and funding resource and you have the Medicaid reimbursement rates. Uh, but usually when we, when we start somewhere, we try to have at least a dual role. So we're serving our kids from our insurance standpoint and we're working with our school districts just because then, um, you know, as that insurance stuff comes in, ideally these kids are going back into the school district anyway. And so we really want to build that rapport with them and, you know, give them as much education and support as we can. So our goal is to ensure that our families become experts in this, that our school districts are, are sufficient.
And we don't teach the kids long-term.
I know.
Yeah, our job is to get in there, diagnose, fix what we can fix and train and get them into regular environments as quickly as possible.
And how we've kind of been a little bit different is versus you come to us and then we send you back to your district, we actually can serve you for months and then we can go into your district with our staff and our programming in your building. So we very can slowly and gradually transition into that space. So the district has time to build a team around that kiddo and support them long-term. And so versus you don't come to our program, then we don't just send you off. Um, and that's actually kind of how I think we stood out and we're a little bit different over the last, you know, at least the last five years since we've been doing that. It just gave that transition a seamless step into the next lease restricted environment.
Well, what we'll do, and we appreciate the time coming here, sort of like an introduction to everybody. So I understand what you're saying is that you basically need the referrals obviously before you open up a shop. You say, yeah, I like Tracy because it shares my name. We can open up an office, but there's no kids coming here, I'm not gonna sign a lease or something, I get that. Um, I, I think what we can do is, you know, people watching this, they get the information, uh, I'm sure there is a need out there. If people have questions, they can come in, if we got still key packets down here, they can contact you. Uh, the school district can contact you as well. Um, I don't know if, uh, I know, Tony, you said you invited Westbrook to Walnut Grove, right?
Yeah, they, they were all given an invite. I don't know what happened, but we can send something out.
Yeah, we can, we can send stuff around. I mean, I, if, if, I understand what you're saying is that you, you can open up a shop with two or three students.
Yep.
I, I, I'm sure there's two or three students within an hour radius of here. So I, 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 we appreciate the time you take to come down here and we certainly like you in our community because it's, uh, it is a need. You know, my limited experience in having to deal with students like this and clients like this, it's, it, it's such a specialty, I think, what you said, that most, most people aren't equipped or places are equipped to deal with it. So, and it's, and, and it's a good thing to have. So, uh, you know, if we could, we could have you here in our community, I think that'd be terrific. And as Bill said, there's not gonna be a problem, you're not gonna have to go knocking on the doors and find a space. There's space.
Is there anybody out there have any questions for, while they're here or?
And I'll leave my card here too and, and some extra packets, so if you want to disseminate those. If you do have a question, my cell phone number is on that card, my email's on that card. I'm fairly responsive, um, pretty quickly for the most part. And so you can always shoot me an email or shoot me a text or give me a call and we can answer most questions and.
We take the hardest kids, the ones that nobody else knows, you know, what to do with. And, um, our goal is to keep them in your communities. We don't want you having to out of district place them or send them, you know, to residential facilities. We want to keep them here, provide the support, um, show the parents, you know, how they, how they do it and, yeah.
No, I don't, I don't deny, you've sold us on the, the, we, it's a concept that I think we need here, so I just want to make sure I'm understanding. What do we need to do?
Get some referrals.
Yeah, just get the word out.
Do we have a paper form that you fill out? We got that here.
I don't, but if, I can send you, I, you can get it on our website, but I'll just send a tutorial as well.
Thank you.
Could I get you to state your website address?
Yeah.
Because, yeah, and phone number over the TVs because it is being recorded and will be replayed.
Yeah, it is, uh, www.behavedcarespecialists.com. Specialist has an S at the end. And, uh, you can, our Sioux Falls number is 605-271-2690.
This is, this is our superintendent.
Hi. And my cell phone number is 605-360-5791. Sometimes if you call my office, they won't send you right to me, so.
Super, thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks for inviting us.
No, thank you for coming, we appreciate it.
Appreciate it very much.
Yeah.
We didn't even want to get a hold of, keep with chat here just before you leave, cause that's.
This is our superintendent right here.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you for coming, appreciate it.
Thanks very much.
Appreciate it very much.
Hi. Sorry, I just came from another meeting.
Okay, we'll let everybody down a lot.
Just making sure I wasn't being lenient.
Thanks for coming.
Excuse me. Thanks guys.
Where you can grab a phone.
Is he the superintendent, that storm in the school board? So at least he was there for the school board.
Yeah, good. Wait a second.
That's a no-brainer.
Yeah. Never had anybody answer back as fast as you.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, the next thing we got, uh, is, uh, appointments to the committee, the charter commission. We got six applications. We have four active members, correct?
Correct.
And we need seven to function and the most we can have is nine, correct?
Correct.
Alright. What I want to do, I don't know if we want to go through these individually or not. Uh, I, I want to appoint, I would like to appoint a full board of nine. And I, I know the people that, with the applications that we have, the ones I would want to appoint. So if we want to go through them individually, you can do that, or I can say, uh, we got Bernie Holmes, Shirley Anderson, Ken Giles, Marvin Aker, Jan RVCU and Dale Johnson Jr. Uh, my, my view is I would appoint, uh, Bernie, Shirley, Ken, Marvin, Jan for nine. Now, if we want to go through these individually, we can, or you can take them in one block because that's, those are the people I'd want to appoint, to have a full council at nine. Our full committee at nine.
I'm already on there, right?
Yeah, you're already there. Do we have to have nine or should, wouldn't it be better to have a smaller number?
I was thinking seven myself, yeah.
If you have nine, then you're gonna have, you're always, you should be reassured you'll have a quorum, at least the seven to be able to function. So you have to have, minus the one, then you're out.
No, I know, yeah. I, what I, what I, that's what I, I want to do, I want to appoint a, a full board up to nine.
So our other committees don't have that many members.
Well, they're not designed.
We don't have a problem with, uh, quorums?
Well, that's what I want to do.
You have to have seven.
Hold on. I understand that, we, we, one thing, we're trying not to have talking.
Yeah.
So, you know, we'll do it individually. I know you guys can vote on whether or not you want, if you approve of these appointments or not, but I'm gonna, I wanted to appoint everybody but Dale, so.
Well, there is one on there that has served up two prior boards and has never completed a term on either of those prior boards. Um, to have it if when things don't go their way, they get up and leave. And I think that falls in the same, I'd go along with the same logic on that with, with Dale as not attending, but, and I, I also believe we don't need a, a group of nine. I think seven is more than enough. They reduce the council from seven to five and it only, it's only logical to go from nine to seven at the same time. So if it's, if it's necessary at this point, I would make a motion to make the charter group the minimum number of seven.
Is that a motion?
Yep.
I would second that.
Any other discussion? So you want to reduce it from nine to seven?
Right.
Hold on a second. I, well, we need like a public hearing or something like that or, I mean, I don't, I don't think you can just simply wave, can you? Just wave a magic wand?
Yeah, because the minimum allowed is seven and the maximum is nine, so.
Yeah, but this is saying that we don't even want a maximum, we just want a board at seven.
And that's all you're appointing, but that's not saying.
No, I think that's what he's saying.
But he's not asking to change the charter.
Right.
From nine to seven. He's just saying he wants seven on the board.
I just want a board of seven. It meets some minimum requirements.
Correct. Then for the two open spots, then we interview people? Because.
We have four, there'd be three open spots.
Oh, alright. So motion is made and seconded. Any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye.
Nope.
Yes.
Steve?
No.
Tony?
Yes.
Dave?
Yep. Okay, so then that's, we need three. Uh, alright.
I would make a motion that we appoint Bernie.
Well, hold on, I gotta, remember we went through this before, I gotta appoint him and you guys gotta approve of my appointments. Remember that? So you're appointing Justice Gersich here to.
Move on.
I am. I appoint, uh, Bernie, Marvin Jan. Is there a motion to approve those appointments?
So.
Second.
Motion made and seconded and any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And then for the two other appointments, then, uh, Madonna, you want to send out notices to three remaining to say that we would interview them if they're still interested?
We forgot a board of seven.
Right, so we have two openings still, don't we? This board of seven can meet.
They made a motion.
We made a motion to drop it to seven.
Are you making a motion to change the charter? From nine to seven?
We made a motion, we want the board to be seven.
That's why I asked that.
Yeah, that's what I thought. You can't make a motion to change the charter. No, and that's, I, I understood them to just say they wanted it to be only seven, that they were not changing the charter.
Right.
It's up to the charter committee to change the charter.
Charter committee would have to change it from, could have changed it. We're saying if we need a minimum of seven.
Right, I understand that.
And that's what we, that's what we.
We need a minimum, minimum of seven to function.
Yep.
But the charter still says up to nine.
Yes.
So technically, we can be up to nine.
We don't have to, that's, we'll appoint them, that's what we voted on, was to only have seven up at seven.
Alright. I understand. Alright, uh, 9C repeal ordinance providing for funding of certain utility connections?
Um, in your agenda packet, I included, um, ordinance number 324, which is an ordinance providing for funding from certain utility connections. Um, this was passed, um, November 23rd, 2015. Through the League of Minnesota Cities, I have since, um, investigated and found out Through the League of Minnesota Cities, I have since investigated and found out that there is no statutory authority that allows a city to act as a fiscal, fiscal agent for another organization. Therefore, it's likely that the state auditor would see this as an illegal expenditure of city resources that benefit of private property. With that being said, I went forward and did a couple more investigation, and the investigation is that the proper way to provide loans to people is through economic development authorities. So what I am asking for is for you to repeal the ordinance to eliminate the city from possibly getting in any litigation trouble and referring this to the economic development authority board.
Have we ever had anybody use this?
Not yet.
All right.
That's not necessarily true. There was, what was done, and I don't know if it's still current or not, but a former council member had it done, financed to the city to have a water line replaced to his house. As I brought it up at council meeting, and it was explained to me that they just, they put it on the taxes or utility bill in order to pay for it. And I said, well, isn't this the wrong way of doing things? And I was told, no, this is how we've done it in the past.
Okay, this particular ordinance that was passed in 2015 is just for people that are assisting residential utility customers for required work with, um, leading up to.
Yeah, the intent behind, the intent behind this was for the East End project, for those folks who'd have to reroute their sewer line to where they're putting the new sewer line. And that way they'd have a, a lower interest cost loan in order to do that versus whatever the banks charging at that time. And some people may not qualify for a bank loan, and there was a handful of properties where the sewer line was, was going out of the back of their house, or now be going out of the front of their house, and it was quite a bit. That was the intent behind the ordinance.
There was more to it, though.
Well, yeah, there was more to it, but that's, that was a stopgap type thing for it, but that's, that's what brought the discussion of that in the past practice. And that's, I just wanted to make sure you understood that they were doing it before. I'm not.
There is another program that is going on, Tony, that is in the, that is in the city code that allows people to have curb stop repairs done, and the city, the city pays for it. If they don't do it, the city conducts it, and then they're charged either on their taxes or charged on their utility bill. But that is, is worded completely different, and I don't know if, if, is that what you're talking about?
It went right up to the House, but it's what I was talking about. They replace it from the curb stop to the House. But I, it's, it's.
But it's irrelevant. The point is, we have done, but that doesn't mean we want to keep doing it.
Right.
The point is, you, you're looking for a motion that we, we.
Repeal the ordinance.
Repeal the ordinance and refer it to the EDA. I'd make that motion.
I'd second that.
Under discussion, are we going to be able to fund the EDA for these amounts?
Well, it would still, it would, it would still be up to the EDA to decide whether or not we would, because we have restrictions with the EDA.
No, I understand that, too. It's just, in order, in order for the EDA to loan money for something like this, they'd have to have the money to loan.
Right, correct, yeah, there'd have to be money there.
Is that?
Yeah, there's, there's, I mean, we can make a, you know, a budget item, if that's what you want to say, an allocation or however you want.
Yeah, so, just as long as that part of it's not being forgotten.
It's not, and it may not be guaranteed. If there's no funds available, it may, right.
Exactly, and then the other thing, too, is just that whatever money comes back in, I mean, the, the EBA is asking, acting as the fiscal agent versus the city of Trace.
Right. Good. Any other discussion? All those in favor of repealing the ordinance signify by saying aye. 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 Opposed? Motion carries. Next, aquatic center fees. We have, uh. I, yeah. That came in a separate email after this, and then it's on your desk. I get the, I get the family thing and all that. The only thing I question on there, and I, it's just a question. That adult morning and evening swim rate just seems awfully low to me. I'm just, I, I just.
They're only in there for, you know, like, oh, oh, two hours.
Sure, sure.
So morning and adult, and, and then evening swim is the reduced rate because that's all they're in there, is for that amount of time.
Sure, and I understand that's, I'm just thinking, you know, three bucks is so, um, I, I just think our fees are so reasonable and so inexpensive. I, I just question that. I just wonder if it could be, if it couldn't be higher. I mean, I.
Yeah, and I'm the opposite way, yeah. I, I think we're starting to get too high where we're going to start pricing people out. And it's like, do you want more people in the pool or less people in the pool?
Yeah, I, I agree, Dave, but so far it's, you know, it's a big expense that we're.
I did prepare.
But it's always going to be an expense.
I did prepare an additional memo, but maybe.
Anyway, with the family pass?
That I was going to ask Seth to, you know, possibly assist us with getting the word out to the public, should you choose to change any of the rates. And this one kind of spells it out as easy as possible, is currently right now, if a family of four uses the facility 10 times, each individual, each, each of those four individuals are paying an admission fee of $2.75. Whereas if they are, say it's me, and I buy an individual pass, and I use it that same number of times, 10 times, I'm paying $6.50 each of them 10 times. So what I tried to do with the Aquatic Center Committee is that we tried to make that gap even out. Why should we charge the individuals more than we charge the families? If you go to, say for instance, the movie theater, you don't get a reduced rate for the number of people that come in. You are charged on an individual rate. Same as going to, like, I don't know, the races, the, the ice skating. And that's what we're trying to do, because even though this seems like it is, you know, a, a negative adversary for the families, in reality, it's a very, very positive for those that have less than four on a pass. If, if I could, if I could use Seth as an example, he and his wife, they're paying more than if it was Diane and she had, you know, five members on her pass, why should we be charging him more than we should be charging each one of their families?
Well, yeah, and I understand. I guess I look at the pool like I do any of our other services, and at what point do we continue to pay tax dollars to support something that isn't supporting itself, and, and how long do we continue to do that? Because not, not all the, the members of our town use the pool, just like not all members use the library or use the multipurpose center, then they, they don't all shop at the liquor store. But, yeah, we make decisions on whether or not these things that we're supporting with our tax dollars, it's no different than looking at our fire department, our police department, our city hall, our maintenance crew, whatever. I, I think at some point we got to start looking at these things and saying, you know, how much can we continue to bleed versus how much we're getting in? And I, um, so that, I, I'm in favor of increases, increased fees. I, I am. I just, my only thought was, is I didn't think that one was enough, but I, I think the fees are very reasonable for people that, that were going to come and use it. I, to me, that's not an issue.
I'm just curious as to, how do these compare with, say, Slaton or Marshall or, you know, some of those within a reasonable driving distance? Because you don't want to push anybody out.
Yeah, I will tell you that Slaton or Marshall, they do have family passes. I believe Slaton's right now for an individual is $84 per single, however, their family is like 114. And again, it goes right back to say, you know, depending on, you know, who, who do we want to accommodate and how do we want to accommodate it?
And if you compare the quality of the pools?
Yeah.
We have a very high-quality pool compared to other communities.
Well, I mentioned those two because they're, they're the only two that compare to what we have. That's why.
The issue being is, is that for the, for years, we haven't raised anything.
We haven't.
And we continue, and we continue to lose money.
Yeah, and I, that's why Dave, you have the statement that the Tracy Aquatic Center first opened its doors in 2003. There was a swim lesson price increase in 2010 from $30 to $35. In 2014, the season price passes were adjusted in an attempt to obtain more users, and the cost was reduced. Other than swimming lessons, this is the first ever increase in 14 years.
Yeah, so what I, what I, what I'm getting at is, anything is consumer-driven. If we see more losses this swim season because the prices are too high, then we got to readjust them. But we got to try it.
We're never going to know unless we try it.
We have to, we have to try it because we lose money every year.
Right, I, one other question, just to compare apples to apples. By reducing in 2014 the, the rates, did our occupancy increase? And you can't really tell because of the weather, I understand that, but did, did our numbers go up at all?
Um, that's kind of hard to say, too, Tony, um, if.
The only hard numbers you can compare is the family passes.
Yeah, I didn't compare exactly that. But the other problem that we're having, and I will say this, is in this memo, I also wrote that the 2017 rates will bounce per admission rates for the same regardless of the number of people on a pass by eliminating the family season passes and offering only individual passes. Furthermore, this will eliminate the confusion and uncertainty of being able, uncertainty of being able to verify if family members are actually family members, or if the purchases are listening, listing additional extended family members to get by cheaper, or simply because they do not understand and read the rules.
I, I had read that and I understood that. I was just asking a separate question.
So with that being said, Tony, I, I don't feel that I can honestly answer that to say that the comparison is up or down, because what we're finding is that, okay, if we have a, if everybody was a more family.
You're talking about the ones that are in the water getting wet. I'm talking about the people who went to the counter and bought the passes. Did the number of family passes increase or decrease with a decrease in? You're, you're talking about people who went through the door. I'm talking about the cash you put in over here.
Okay.
And, you know, because you can't control what goes through the door.
Yeah.
And if you, if you can lower your season pass or family pass, whatever, and increase more, you're going to make it up on volume, and that money's captured whether the pool gets rained out that day or not. So that, that's why I was asking that question.
If we spent more, I mean, if we, if we sold more season passes ver, from one year to the other year when we reduced it, the answer is no.
Okay, that was, yep, we got there.
Yeah, what I'll say for that is that that's all going to depend on, like, say for instance, Shane, this particular five years, you have all three of your kids that are going, and you have a season pass of five, but in five years, one of them aren't going, so then now you only have four, you know, type thing. And that's going to keep changing, you know, every year.
So this is the recommendation of the board?
Yes, it is.
Okay, I, I would make a motion that we accept the board's suggestion and try it this year and see what happens. Is there a second? Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded. Any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we got the Bullock Engineering Award for Airport Geographic Information System Services. And questions on this here?
My question is, this was a request for qualifications. Are we going to, are we awarding them anything? Are we gonna, they're going to get the job without having a competitive bid? And that's the way it's done? Why?
FFA, or FAA law says we cannot award the job based on money. It has to be based on qualifications.
Okay, that's, that's what I wanted to know.
Okay. Do we have a motion then to accept Woolpert as the firm that will be providing the AGIS services?
I'd make that motion.
I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded. Any other discussion?
My, my question under discussion is, do we have an idea of what the cost is and where the money's coming from?
We don't, um, Paul told us that once, once they, once we know this, then, Tony, what happens is that the grant gets applied for, which Woolick does for us.
That's answering my question. Yep, okay. That's what I wanted to know.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor of awarding Woolpert the bid signify by saying aye. 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 Motion carries. Next, we got commercial property and nuisances. Madonna?
This is what we discussed during the 5:30 work session, is that I put a memo out to you guys asking if you wanted to treat commercial properties the same as residential properties when we start reviewing the, the nuisance ordinances.
Yep, then, yes, the consensus was yes.
The ordinance doesn't specify.
No, it does not.
So, yep.
Yes.
Do we need a motion on that?
Just if you would, it would be nice.
I'd make the motion that all properties are treated the same as per the ordinance.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? I would just encourage that means that all council members need to support that when issues come to the council, as they will. Yep. Any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we got the ISG proposal, request for geotechnical construction testing phase one.
Yes. So, hi. It's not a proposal from us. It's a proposal from American Engineering and Testing. They were on the Fourth Street project as well. They do the compaction and concrete material testing, so it was part of the PER budget. We sent them an estimate of how many tests we think they're going to have. It'll, you know, be subject to what actually happens in the field, because they might be able to do a few trips, or a few tests during one trip. So Wool, Wool, it's not a fixed cost, but their proposal comes to $32,000. I think we had $40,000 in the approved PER budget. So I guess I would ask for approval of that, and as with everything for this project, contingent on rural development approval. And we can get them into town. They'll, might be doing some testing next week already.
When is it that snowing?
It's not snowing, no.
Any questions for Chris?
The other proposal we received was from Braun, but AET's proximity, I mean, we kind of knew that they were going to be the most competitive, but, and they, and they do good work. We like working with them.
Okay, any questions? If not, do we have a motion to approve the bid from AET to do the testing?
Make that motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
That's it. Sounds like they're going to start digging on Monday, so there'll be another project. Did you guys all get a copy of the email newsletter?
Yep.
Okay, we put all the council members. Did you get one? Okay, we'll make sure you're on the list of, or check your junk. I don't know if it's.
I got it. I got it on this street project out here, so.
Oh, you did?
I'm assuming I'm not in your junk mail.
Yeah, maybe we didn't get the council updated then, so. All right, thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
All right, next is the EDA set public hearing, property tax abatement for the Masonic building bond.
Yeah, I think Diane got you guys this today. It was added after last week's agenda was sent out, but anyways, we are working on the bond to help secure the demo loan that we got from Deed. What that involves is we need to, it's called abatement. It's sort of a misleading term because it's not a true abatement in the sense that we think of, of it as. But what the city is required to do by Minnesota State statute is to list specific parcels. So what we did with the advisory of our bond counsel and, and bond attorneys is, we came up with a specific list of parcels and their net tax capacity. Long story short, we had to equal $13,000 so we could make the payment each year. And if the loan payment is lower, that, you know, the bid's coming less than $290, then, you know, we might be able to scratch some of those parcels off the list, but we won't know that until later. And anyways, the loan will be levied as a whole for all taxpayers, not just these parcels. It's more of a formality that we have to list these parcels. So what we did was we selected adjacent parcels, and I have that list here that's included in the packets. And it's, it's a common form of public bonding. It's the same type of bond that was used when updates to the Aquatic Center were made, so it's not the first time Tracy's done something like this. So I guess if anybody has any questions, what we're asking for is that the city council call this public hearing, and I do have the notice of public hearing drafted. We're hoping to hold that at the next regularly scheduled city council meeting on Tuesday, April 25th.
6:30.
Yep.
I'd make that motion to the public hearing, the abatement of proposed property tax.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. 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 Motion carries. Thank you, Terrence. Uh, next hospice petition for local improvements and agreement of assessment waiver for, of irregularity and appeal.
Say that 10 times fast.
I just did.
Okay, so what we have here is Hospice of Murray County has signed the petition for local improvements. So they are requesting 75 feet of extension in order to gain access to their lot that was recently annexed. If all, if everything is acceptable in the letter, then we'll need to have the city clerk sign that and send a copy back. And then along with that goes the agreement of the assessment and waiver, which I also have here. In talking with Chris, originally their plan was to be extend the road or the improvement 70, or 50 feet. Now they've changed their wishes to 75 feet, which then changes the $60,000 fee in this waiver of appeal to, probably will go to 90, just to incrementally increase that. And then what this document does is that basically, they can't say, we want the improvements, we pay for the improvements and assess them. They can't, basically, they can't fight it, or come back and say, no, we changed our mind. So that's the way that, that's the purpose of this document anyways. So basically, they do have it signed, but we would go back with that change and have them re-execute with that change because I think it was just an oversight by them because we had discussed it on the phone prior to them approving. So if everything else, or if all of the rest of the terms looks good, just changing that 60 to $90,000 instead, we'd like to get a motion to, you know, have the language approved. And Matt Gross, our attorney, has looked over this, and all the language is great. His only concern was that amount that we should change.
Any questions from anybody?
This resolution you got back here, is that going to be changed to the 75 feet?
Yeah, this is just a draft, and once we get to that point, we would, you know, add the resolution number, change it to 75 feet, and add in the rest of the information. But I just wanted to get that out there.
You're not passing the resolution. It would come, the resolution would come forward to you at a later date.
Yep. Yep.
No questions? Thank you. If we're not passing anything, right?
No, we wanted, we wanted to, I don't know if you need to get permission to, like, sign this letter, saying, like, acknowledging it. And then for the agreement of assessment, if we change that to 90,000, does everything else look good? Because then we'll need to get that approved. So, so you can sign it as mayor and Madonna as city clerk.
So what they're telling you pretty much, Tara, is that once you present that resolution to us, then that is when it becomes approved and...
So we want...
...the signatures.
Yeah, yep. We want this one, this document, to be approved so we can get it signed. And once, once the first thing on this and the second thing on this is all approved, then last comes the resolution, basically saying, yep, we took the proper steps to do it. Here we are. Does that make sense?
All right.
I know, it's kind of, it's a lot of steps.
Kind of backwards.
You're going to need to obtain originals, too.
That's fine, we can. They need to resign this anyways because of the dates and the amount to change, so.
Okay, yep.
So basically, we want permission for this one to be accepted, and this one to be accepted and executed by both parties.
All right, do we have a motion then to allow Madonna and myself to enter into the agreement of assessment waiver of irregularity and appeal, and also a resolution declaring adequacy of petition and ordering preparation of a report?
Nope, the first one and the second one.
For local improvements.
Yep, not the resolution declaring adequacy.
I'd make that motion on those two, the petition and the first agreement.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any discussion?
With the 90,000 instead of the 60. Yep, for record, I suppose.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. We're looking forward to a couple fun projects.
Yep. Okay, next we got resolution. We got the resolution for single audit policy.
Yes. Anytime that a city receives federal grant money is $750,000 or more, we have to have what's called a single audit. A single audit is prepared by our auditing firm in a different way than a regular audit is. And because we receive that grant money for the waste motor project, it has thrown us over the $750,000 mark. So we have to have a policy, single, federal government requires that we have a policy for single audits. It was prepared by our auditing firm, sample, the sample policy, and it was okay by our city attorney. So the only reason we need it is because we have to have a single audit because we received $750,000 in federal grant money.
That single audit is just referred to the money that the feds...
Correct.
I'd make the motion to approve resolution 2017-23, single audit policy.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Next, the consent calendar, municipal council payable, approval of planning commission minutes, relief association minutes, and the aquatic center committee minutes. Anybody have any questions or comments about the consent calendar?
I'd move approval, and then I'd like to comment on the discussion.
Second.
Motion made in second. Go ahead, Tony.
Councils payable, who knows, the legal fees. My concern is, are we, are we keeping them under control? We don't, you know, what's, who's spending it, I understand that. But are we, are we making sure we're not exceeding any budgets with all these email questions and all this, this stuff regarding, and I'll use hospice house or other contracts where it's $300 here and $150 for an email there and that type of stuff? Is that being looked after by the department heads? They know they're not just supposed to type of questions and stuff. I just...
Well, I know for one, I will tell you that I probably reach out to Matt quite often to make sure that we are legally in compliance for a lot of things, whether it would be a, it's not on a daily basis, but it's probably on a weekly basis.
No, no, I'm just saying, are we keeping in mind...
No, I'm just explaining, Tony, as always I'm doing. I can certainly, you know, anybody can certainly, you know, look through anything to see what, you know, the bills are if you want. As far as the department heads, I think the only department head that probably reaches out to Matt besides myself is Shane. And I know what that Tara does, and I have no idea the control that, I mean, I am not involved when she reaches out to the attorney.
I just, those things are necessary. I just want to make sure we're keeping an eye on it.
Yep, I understand what you're saying. Yep.
That's all the discussion I had.
Yeah, I would agree. I don't think we're questioning it. It's just the fact that, do we know what the dollar amounts we're spending in? Are they within budget to do that?
If you look at it at $150 an email or a $300 check over a document, it adds up. That's...
Well, we were under last year. We do know that. And I know, we're just discussing.
Yeah, we're not questioning anything.
Yep, I understand that.
But if you bring it up and talk about it, then we'll be under again this year. That's why I do it.
Yeah, no, I'm hoping so, too. I really am. The budget amount was, you know, we have, I will be honest, we did spend a lot of money, and I will gladly pass this around. We spent a lot of money on the Chris Plot dog ordinance. That, I, that, you know, was something that not one of us could have controlled.
No, not when they started contacting the other side. No, that's, that's just one of them things. I just want to...
No, I understand.
Keep an eye on it.
Thank you.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Consent calendar adopted. Unfinished business, we got the spring cleanup. We talked a little bit about that in our working session there.
Well, what we decided is our ordinance committee is going to add that into our, what I would suppose is, Madonna, if you would do that, maybe we just coordinate a meeting. Let's get a meeting set up with the five of us. If you want to maybe send out an email with some dates, would that work for you?
Sure.
And then we'll get together, and then we can come back with our recommenda, my thought there was the committee would come up with the recommendations, what we're going to do, bring it to the council for approve it, for approval, and then we would ask Seth to put it in the paper so that everybody understands what's going to happen with this committee and what they can expect, and then we move forward from there.
And to look at how much money we have in the fund.
Right. Yep.
And then pick a date as soon as possible.
Pick a date and all that, and we'll have our own budget, and then we can work on volunteers. We can do all those kind of things, but, yeah.
That'll work.
Okay.
Okay. Next, I want to see a typo. Is it B or C? It's B. Update on Mr. Dogs at Lovey Yang House?
Um, I'm sorry, I should, we should have probably...
I'm just being...
Yeah, no, 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 we should have probably got this update when Jason was here earlier. But to my knowledge, what I have been told is that both Mr. Love has vacated the house due to it not being passed to be livable, and to the dogs have, he has removed the dogs from the property as well. And I understand that he was going to take the dogs to relatives of his in the Twin Cities, is what he said.
So the dogs aren't there anymore?
Yeah, I do know that there's a little bit of, I don't know, negative comments going around about now we just let the dogs go, what's going to happen to them. But that's not, I mean, we can't do anything about it.
So the house is, the house is not being lived in?
Correct.
So we don't know what the status of that will be going forward?
Water shut off?
Water is shut off. The meter's pulled. And I did give them, the owner changed since I last wrote that house. I did give him a copy of that, and he said he's willing to work forward on getting the improvements done. He has a list of deficiencies that I wrote in, I think, 2013. Obviously, it's in worse shape now because it sat for another three, four years. But we're gonna just see what they're gonna do this summer. If it doesn't look like they're gonna do anything, then we're gonna change his name and then resubmit the documents with the deadline. So, give him a little bit of a chance anyway.
Yep, good.
Okay. Airport hangar?
Shane, do you want to address that one, too?
Yeah, I sent letters out to the current end number holders that are registered with the FAA. Hopefully, by the end of this week or next week, we'll see the responses on that. If there's anything that's changed since the last one was done, I think in 2014. And then based on that, we'll decide, you know, where we kind of want to move occupants around within the hangars or kick whoever out if they're not storing an airplane or providing any end numbers for that, so.
I'm assuming we're responsible for the hangars and the condition of the hangars? Is that true? Is the city or not? Or is that...
Yeah, that's city property.
Because at some point, I'd like us to try and budget, we need to do something there.
With those hangars.
Really start. I mean, you drive into town, the first thing you see coming from the north on that, on that road is those hangars. And I'm assuming there might be some FAA money available. I don't know.
There's more, there's more available for new hangars than there is refurbished. Refurbished is state only, and I think it's a 50-50 grant match.
But, you know, steel's fairly cheap now. I mean, to throw new, just new steel siding on there would be a huge improvement, I suppose, just my thought.
Okay, next, office hours, and we talked about that in our working meeting, and I think the consensus was to keep that door open till 4:30.
Starting May 1st, our office hours will be from 8 to 4:30, open to the public.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right, nuisance committee. We talked about that, too, with the chief.
Again, I'm assuming that's going to be that same...
Spring cleanup.
Be a combination of the ordinance and nuisance together.
Okay, we'll join that.
That would make sense, wouldn't it?
It would, I would say.
Good.
So those two, the ordinance and the nuisance will be...
We'll join, yep.
Yep.
Okay. Next, special assessment policy. Were you going to talk about that, Rosemary, or no?
I was here about the nuisance thing. I didn't know about the special assessment.
Oh.
The special assessment policy has been on the agenda ever since we first originally talked about it, and it, we are just leaving it on there because we know it is something that needs to be addressed.
Well, yeah, well, we have to because information I'm getting is people are being told that, don't worry about the assessment. You've been assessed so far because it's going to change, you know, for the east end of town there. I mean, we can't, I mean, I don't know.
There has been no official assessment.
I'm just, no, but there's, there's figures out there. But nobody knows exactly what's going to happen until we collectively meet and decide what to do. So anybody that gets information saying, well, don't worry about it because it's going to be X, we don't know what X is.
Right.
No, we as a council need to decide what we're going to assess, and we've discussed that.
Yep.
That the formula that was used is not...
Right. But nothing's definite yet to say, people say it's only going to be X, so don't worry about it. So when, when are we going to meet to figure that out? Because we need to.
We could answer a question on it right away quick tonight. The funding for that, is there any of it that is improvement bonds, or is it all just general obligation bonds or donated, or granted money? Or is there any of the financing arm that's being used for that, that east end project that requires a special assessment?
Yes.
Which one?
The, the improvement, there's an improvement bond for the project, yeah.
And that goes back to a certain percentage?
Yeah, it's, it's to cover anything that wasn't eligible for the rural development, either loan or grant. So there, you know, your streets, I think everyone understands there's...
And that, that particular bond is how much?
I don't know that number off the top of my head, but it was like...
Yeah, I don't know it off the top of my head either.
Five hundred some thousand?
530, I think.
So what I would ask before we meet is, we find out how much financing that we, we have gotten ourselves into that requires an assessment. And then we'll figure out what percentage is and what we can do, however we're going to do it, to make both the bonding liability satisfied and not put 30% on somebody over there that didn't want the project from the beginning with. So those, those questions have to be answered first, and then we have to figure out what...
How to do it.
How to do it. But you got to know what the numbers you're dealing with in order to...
Yep. And then obviously, not do something that's too specific to this project so that you're, you can still be consistent with the next one.
Right.
Yeah. Yep. So we'll get together with Todd to talk about that bonding.
Same amount? Does it take that long to get that stuff?
No. So at the first...
Next council meeting?
Well, that's two weeks.
Next council meeting, yeah.
Do you want, do you want just a committee to set on it and set up a committee on it and decide and bring the information to the council?
That's what I would say, yeah.
That's fine.
That would work.
I'll be on there.
I'll do it.
How many do we need?
We can't have more than two.
Can't have more than two.
So somebody else?
Donna, you want to be on there?
I have to have just council members on this?
No, we can't have more than two.
That's what I thought. So can you have people from the...
That's a word.
Yep, yep. You want to bounce here again?
Yes.
The 50th committee? You're going to get an award.
Yeah.
One, two, three, four. Well, we come to the council to set the policy, the committee members would just be... Okay, probably need one more.
Don't need...
You only bring your recommendations.
Yeah, let's meet. The last time I was on one, there was three of us.
Okay.
That was it.
I don't think it's...
Okay, me, Tony, Rosemary, and Madonna. And then the information you said you wanted to get from Todd, you could just shoot it to Madonna and then shoot it to us.
So I guess I would ask then, because we need to do this soon. Our next, our May council meeting, the first one is the 14th.
Yep.
Or, I mean, the 15th, I'm sorry.
So we need to meet on the 8th then?
No, it'd be the 8th, wouldn't it?
May.
May 8th.
May 8th would be the first, second Monday.
Oh, it is. Yeah, you're right. First is on a Monday, yeah.
So May 8th. We meet that first week of May.
Would that work?
So we're going to meet after the planning and zoning?
Would that work to bury?
Is that too soon?
Well, you guys can decide when you're going to meet. I'm just for the council.
I've got other commitments that night after the planning and zoning, so we can meet anytime prior to that. As soon as you get the information...
Well, yeah, just, once you get the information, then we'll set up a date. But we'll do it before the May 8th council meeting.
Right. Right.
Okay, so in the May eighth council meeting, we can expect to have information?
An answer, yep.
And then while we're discussing the special assessments, I noticed that there was a letter to the editor in the paper specifically, and is also talking about certain property owners that had corner lots from this past project, and saying that the corner lots were owned by council members. There, how many council, how many corner lots were there that weren't assessed properly, Chris?
I think it was ten.
And there were a number of people that had the corner lots?
Oh, yeah, it wasn't, yeah.
It wasn't just, it wasn't just properties owned by council members?
Nope.
And where, where did we leave that? Do you remember we had that discussion, I think it was back in February, and decide whether or not to reassess those, or whether or not to assess it properly in future projects?
We, we got a letter from Matt Gross asking that we paid for our error, and we fully admitted the error, and we, we agreed at that time to pay for it, and cited a few things that it maybe doesn't need to be as high as it was, I mean, the actual damages experienced by the city, but we agreed to it, just to move on and keep a good relationship with the city. And then it was Mike at the time, I think he and maybe with the direction of council, I'm not sure about that, but wanted to hold off to see how the appeals went.
Yep.
So we haven't paid the city anything yet.
Okay, so nothing has been done with reassessing any of their corner lots?
No, no, yeah, it was, the, I think the, the city was in an unenviable position, was the quote from Matt's letter, to, it'd be tough to go back and reassess people more. Some were, some were lower and some were higher, it was a net, a net lower assess, lower total amount that should have been assessed, but yeah, nothing was done.
Okay, I didn't mean the spring is on you, but I knew you'd be able to answer.
Yeah, no, that's fine. Yeah, no, I didn't see the letter, although I would have been prepared.
Previously, because I certainly didn't like the implication that only council members had the corner properties, and for whatever reason, they were never assessed properly, making people think that the council members involved were the reason for the delay of them not being assessed properly.
Nothing about that, no.
So in reviewing, in reviewing the minutes, I believe we never, there was nothing ever addressed on those specific corner lots.
Correct.
And the issue was that, how we'd go about doing that, whether or not we would say that in future projects, the side yard would be assessed a full unit as opposed to a half unit?
Right, right.
And in order for that to be fully implemented, if in fact that's what the council wanted to do, we would need a resolution approving that. I don't know whether you were involved in that, if we talked about that or not, but there had to be some guideline to determine what to do.
Right.
Does that make sense? I mean, I'm just, I'm just throwing things out there, because I, I am not going to get involved in what happens with these corner lots, because we live in a small enough town for people to be able to determine who lives in a corner lot and who doesn't.
Exactly.
And as I said at that meeting in February that we had, I'm not taking part of the discussion and voting on what to do with the corner lots. So any implication that because a council member owns it, nothing was done about it, is upsetting to me. So, that being said, we need to do something about it, don't we? So...
The issue needs to be put to rest one way or another, yeah.
Yeah, and I thought it was until I had to read this again, making the assumption that council members with corner lots were purposely doing something not to address it. So, so this council now has to decide what to do with improperly assessed corner lots. And I am not going to have this discussion, and I won't vote, and whoever else is involved obviously can't vote, so this council can decide. So the last, what I think, what last thing was left off in February, was you're going to get information from Matt, Matt was going to decide, you know, give recommendations on what to do, and I think the consensus was at the time for the people who could vote, that what they would do is assess the side lots as a unit as opposed to a half unit. Now whether or not this council wants to do with that, that's up to this council. So...
When you say February, you mean February of sixteen?
Sixteen.
Yeah, okay.
It wasn't this year.
Yeah, no, no.
No.
I forgot. We're already in April and I was like, yeah.
No, no, it wasn't, it wasn't February, it wasn't February of this year at all.
Right, right, okay.
So, that's what needs to be done. So I don't know whether or not this council's got any questions for Chris, or wants to ask Chris any questions about how we go about reassessing it, so...
Well, we've already paid Matt to come up with an opinion on it, would be nice to know what his opinion was, you know, if that's, if that's what was done.
He'll remember all, but I'll have to ask him, I mean...
That's another twenty-five dollars, no, I don't, trust me, I know what it costs to call. But yeah, if he's got, find out what he's got on it, if he's got anything, then we can, with much information he's got, so he can make an informed decision. I mean, that's, I don't know which other way to start with.
Well, that needs, it needs to be addressed, because it was brought up, and I thought it was put to rest, and it's not, so...
Yeah, I think at the time, we had a plan, and then the appeals were filed, so that what the actual amount of the shortfall was, you know, could change depending on the outcome of the appeal, because I think a couple of those may have been appellants.
Yes, they were.
So they got wiped out anyway, yeah.
Then the, the next question is, I don't know how much you agree, what's your liability is, your company's liability is, we have no idea what that number is either. So that information, what Matt's opinion, that information...
Yep.
Then somebody can make a decision.
Right.
All right, I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
No, that's fine.
I knew you were, I knew you wanted to talk about it.
Okay.
I was just saying, I know everybody has a difference of opinion on, you know, the legal things, and I'm doing my best, and I know you know I am, I'm doing my best to not spend the money that is necessary on the legal fees. However, I just want to throw it out there for you two and the public, that to me, legal fees are a lot more, a reason of spending public funds on legal fees, a lot more than it is to have cable TV in certain departments.
I'd agree with that.
If you got legal questions you need to master?
Yeah, I just want...
Quite good known lawyers.
Yeah.
Brought it out there.
Okay, thank you, Chris, I appreciate you sticking around.
Oh, before, sorry, before the, we're available for whatever, you know, as you're trying to workshop special assessment policies, if you want to, you know, shoot us something and say, if we did this, this, and this, what would the resultant assessment be on an example project? So just, you know, let us know, say the committee comes up with, we're going to assess ten percent of water, you know, whatever, we can run it through a couple of past projects and show you what, if it's coming up with a reasonable end amount, so just let us know what.
Last time I'd asked about the sidewalks, did you guys get a chance to look at those?
Andy, Andy's going to be in town next week starting, so it's gone on his list of things to look at.
We get an update on that at the next meeting, possibly, if we...
He's going to hit all of them, just not the one by...
Yeah, I'll have him run up and down and see how they're looking.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, next is request to purchase global search platform software, Madonna?
This was on the last agenda that we tabled, one of the council members brought up the fact that it would be, if we could get by purchasing one license versus three, I did reach out to the company and their minimum licensure is three, so it's the same price of a matter.
I was afraid you were going to say that.
Same price, if it's one license or three licenses.
Now that I know, I moved to allow you to purchase the software program.
Motion made in the second, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries new business, planning commission recommendation to put a sidewalk in grass between bakery and Anderson building.
Shane, do you want to address that?
I can do that. So right now, there's actually an old beat-up asphalt alley, it'd be where the first bakery was, between the old Anderson, which is now Minga's, now foreclosed, but there's that alley there, goes behind, be the alley behind the library, it attaches that to Third Street sidewalk. So what they're recommending, the planning commission, is just putting an eight-foot wide sidewalk down that alley, tear that alley out, and then on each side of sidewalk, but green space, just planning.
So would you put a curb on the alley side then? Because right now, you know, it looks like you could just drive through there until you get hit Third Street, and then you drop off, so you put a, there's a curb on Third Street, you put a curb in the alley, and then a sidewalk with green space on each side?
Yeah.
Right?
We'd have to put like a sidewalk approach probably on the alley side, on the, be the west end.
Right, but I mean, it'd be, otherwise it'd be curb up to that, so it'd be, so wheelchair accessible and all.
Yep, and we talked about removing the curb and gutter, one section there, and making an approach off of Third Street, and then some kind of a crosswalk over to the, be the east side of Third Street, kind of where Affordable Appliances, either that way or the dentist, see how things lay out there, but that way they could, they'll have a crossing there too, but...
From...
Crosswalk mid, mid block.
Mid block.
From...
Be similar to what's straight out here.
The alley.
Pretty much.
Yeah, so they could go from alley to alley.
Yep.
Right, so you'd have, you'd have a sidewalk access, wheelchair accessible on both the alley and Third Street.
Yeah, and actually, the crosswalk can't be in an alley, it has to be on its own, kind of like what's out right across the road here.
Right.
So it'd probably have to be like a diagonal...
Sure.
...type crosswalk, but it's doable.
Good.
So, that was the plan anyway.
Is there a, want to budget it for a...
Is there a rough cost?
I mean, I'm going to guess around five.
Well, I would suggest we budget that for two thousand and eighteen.
Well, I mean, I just, for a...
Yeah, no, I, yeah, but I mean, we don't have it in the budget for seventeen, right?
No.
So I, I would think we'd want to budget that in.
Yeah, the only way we'd be able to do it is if we have a good year with repairs, you know, and we have money towards fall, but we just see how things go, otherwise we can budget it for twenty eighteen too.
Would that be both the green, the sidewalk, and the handicap, or the crosswalk and the handicap assessment, before that five thousand?
I mean, because our labor's already budgeted, so it'd be...
Pardon me?
Our labor's already budgeted for the year, so I mean, just be the matter of the concrete, we have the dirt, so...
Okay, anything else? Okay, mayor, council, communications, anybody have anything?
I was approached by an individual, I don't know if we can do it now based on what we said about the other stuff, but looking for some funding sources to take down an eyesore house that they own. Is there anything, and I mentioned it with Bill and Tara, as far as the EDA side of it, is there anything that, is there any resources that the city has, where a resident's got a house next door to them that they own, but they want it gone, and like a five thousand dollar low interest loan, whatever it costs, take the house down, do we have anything we can do that with?
There is the money that, and I believe it's all spent right now, the, the...
Code enforcement.
Program income that came back, yeah, there is code enforcement, but again, this is...
Then you can't, yep.
I was going to say this and go right back to that other thing, Tony, is that the city can't privately fund individuals.
So I just wanted the discussion on that.
Yeah, I want to say that there is also a flyer out in the hallway about possible help to property owners, we might want to go look at that too, I'm not sure what it involves, but...
When that CBDC money that comes back, is that allowed for that, or?